Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the February 5, 2014 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? And also, as we remember, Marjorie Copeland-Hamers. Thank you. There are no changes to the agenda.
Sure. I'll move for adoption. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We do have some committee reports. Mr. Unger, the sanitation authority?
No, we got rained out.
You didn't?
Yeah, we did. I mean, snowed out.
Okay. How about development review?
Yes, ma'am. We did meet January 23. First thing we talked about was election of officers. Kevin's still vice chair, myself chair, and got done with that. Somebody had asked us to review the landscaping requirements, so we did go through that pretty extensively, and we tweaked a few things, and hopefully that'll work out. But, you know, pretty much everything kind of stayed the same, but we did work on a few things. We talked about the master development plan. Committee was thinking maybe we could do away with that, and we had discussion about that again, and we also talked about it before, and we felt like that we should have the master development plan come through the planning commission into the Board of Supervisors and have it approved that way. The other thing we talked about was height exceptions, and I'll be honest with you, I don't remember everything we talked about on that. Let me go to my notes. I think we left pretty much, I'm not going to say that. We'd done some exceptions, and we went through our list and deleted a few things and added a couple things to clarify them, and that will be coming before the planning commission review to see if everything's going to be okay on that. And flood plain overlay to district, we talked about that, but pretty much, we don't have a whole lot of control over that. That's just something the federal government's been peaking on the country, and we're going to have to abide by whatever they tell us to do, so. And that's about all we talked about.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was a big meeting. Conservation easement authority, Mr. Tripple.
Yes, we had a meeting January 23, and it's ongoing conversation about getting information out to the public as to what the CEA, the advantages to it. So, at that time, there was a production team picked for, to create informational conservation easement brochures and a video. So, this ought to be interesting. Involvement with Shenandoah University and the, and Mr. Lawrence is directly involved, so this, we hope, is informational and interesting to people who are concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moan, I know that comp plan didn't meet during the period of time, but would you like to comment on the southern?
Sure. The southern Frederick land use study kind of formally kicked off last Wednesday, the 29th. All the working groups got together, got started with their work, and they're all going to be engaged over the coming month and should be providing their initial reports back through Mike Ruddy to the larger working group and the comp plan committee by the 28th of this month. So, the work's underway.
Great, great. I see Mr. David Smith from the city of Winchester down there. Would you have a report for us, Mr. Smith?
No, we don't. We were snowed out as well in our last meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would like very much to make the appointments to our major committees this evening, and we are ever grateful for the people who serve with us, and you'll see a combination of planning commissioners, a combination of citizen folk who help us, and we're ever grateful for that. So, let me quickly go through Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee. We have Mr. Christopher Moan, who is a member of the planning commission from the Redbud District, Gary Oats, who is a member of the planning commission from the Stonewall District, Rhodes Marsden, who is a member of the planning commission from Back Creek, Paige Manuel, also a member of the planning commission from the Shawnee District, Roger Thomas, and I serve ex officio to this committee. Citizen members include James Golladay, who is a former, actually, former chairman of the planning commission, Kay Dawson, who's a citizen member from the Redbud District, and Tony Morelli, who is a citizen member from the Apeken District. And again, we thank those folks very, very much. Development review and regulations include Greg Unger, who is of the Back Creek District, Kevin Kenny from the Gainesboro District, also from the planning commission, Gary Oats from the planning commission, the Stonewall District, Larry Ambrosi from the planning commission from the Shawnee District, and again, both Roger Thomas and I serve ex officio. Citizen members include Jay Banks from the Back Creek District, Tim Stowe from the Back Creek District, Dwight Schenk from the Gainesboro District, Eric Loman from the Redbud District, and Whitney Wagner from the Stonewall District. We are grateful for your work, and the really nice thing is they elected to serve us for another year. Okay, this is the time in our agenda that if there's anything that is not on the agenda that you'd like to speak to us about, please do that at this moment. Anyone? Okay, thank you. All right. Our first item is a public hearing. It is conditional use permit 01-14 Wesley W. Rudolph for a public garage without body repair. The property is located at 2360 South Pfeiffer Road and is identified with a property identification number 81-A-50 and is in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of planning commission, this property is currently zoned RA rural areas, and its land use is residential. It's surrounded by RA zone properties, and their use is residential. If I could turn your map to the left to give you an idea where this property is located, it is outlined in black, as you pointed out, Madam Chair. This is for a public garage without body repair, which the RA zoning district will approve conditional use permit. This part of the county is to remain rural in nature according to our comprehensive policy plan, and this proposed conditional use permit will take on a 28, nine-acre parcel in a garage that's already on the parcel as we speak. The property is surrounded by RA zone properties, as I pointed out, and nearest buildings or dwellings from this property, and where this use is going to take place is actually 500 feet from the property. Should the planning commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, our review agency comments and requirements could be complied with at all times. Number two, any proposed business signs should conform to cottage occupation sign requirements, and it's not exceed four square feet in size and five feet in height. And number three, the operation will be limited to the applicant and one employee. Number four, no more than, or, number four, no more than three vehicles per day. The applicant will be limited to repairing only five vehicles or equipment on site at any time. Number five, all repair activity shall occur in a completely enclosed structure. Number six, hours of operation shall be from Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there will be no repair activities will take place on Sunday. And number seven, any expansion or change of use will require a new conditional use permit. For the record, Madam Chair, the applicant's here, and I will be able to answer any questions that you or any of the planning commissioners may have on this proposed conditional use permit. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Sharon? Any? Thank you. Would the applicant like to address us? If you'll come up and give us your name and Magisterial District.
Yes, ma'am. Wesley Rudolph from Back Creek District, Star Tannery. You see, in the permit that I've requested, it's for a small engine repair shop located in a garage currently constructed on the property that we own in Star Tannery.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Yes, Mr. Unger?
Wesley, what do you, is it lawnmowers and stuff like that you work on?
Yes, typically, it's not auto repair. It's lawnmowers, chainsaws, compact, small compact tractors, zero-turn mowers, stuff that the average person would use around their home or small property, not automobiles.
Anyone else? Question for the applicant. Thank you, sir. Yes, I'm sorry.
In the conditions, it says here only five vehicles or equipment on site at any one time. Five chainsaws, isn't very many chainsaws, or weed eaters, or mowers, I mean, do you think that's going to be too restrictive if this were to go forward? Five pieces of equipment, I don't see how you can really, well, just from my opinion, that doesn't seem like much allowance for having things on site to work on it.
It could be some restrictive. If that is the, that is the condition that's set forth, I will abide by that, you know, as it's set forth. It would be fairly restrictive, you know, if you, when counting, you know, each chainsaw or, you know, if you're counting each chainsaw as a piece of equipment. Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment on that, too. I was thinking the same thing, and I didn't bring it up. I didn't know he was there, and I'm glad he is, and I don't live that far from him. I could bring that many pieces to him at one time, just one day, seriously. You get a couple chainsaws, weed eaters, leaf blowers, and what have you, and it seems pretty restricted to me. If he had three times that many, it's nothing.
Madam Chair, I have to agree. Cars is one thing. I can see that the five limit on cars, but for a small engine repair, and I'm not trying to get into your business, but that does seem awfully restricted, because I'm like Greg, you know. Typically, in the springtime, when I take stuff, it's two or three pieces of equipment at one time to get it repaired.
I understand.
They would all be enclosed anyway, wouldn't they?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I think we have some redundant restrictions here. I don't see any reason to have number four and five if we have six. Why would we limit the customers and the numbers of pieces of equipment if all repair has to occur inside? If we're worried about maybe having a lawnmower sitting outside, we could say all items need to be inside that are going to be repaired, but, you know, I think maybe we've gone, we have some redundant criteria there that could come out. And if he has 10 chainsaws all inside, do we really care?
Right.
You are going to be the sole employee, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, yes, ma'am.
So, you can only work on one thing at a time, anyway, so you could have a building full. Do you have any idea of what you think your business demand will be?
I do not, ma'am. I'm hoping it'll be a great demand. I don't know what, I haven't thought of a number, you know, of what I would expect on a, on a daily, I might say, to be there on a daily basis.
Madam Chair, if he keeps them housed, I'm like Roger, I don't see the point in having it on there. He can have 50 chainsaws in there, and we wouldn't know it.
So, what you're suggesting is to remove the number of pieces of equipment?
And the customers. I don't know why we have four and five.
I agree.
If, why would we care how many customers come in unless it's an issue with the road and, you know, whether it's five trips or 20 trips, it shouldn't make that much difference on the road. If everything is repaired inside and stored inside, and I guess we could hear, to make sure there's no neighbor comments that there's somebody upset, but maybe after we listen to the applicant and have comments from the audience, we ought to talk about it a little more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this request? Anyone at all? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I think that, does anybody have any other change they'd like to make? Well, I think...
I'd just like to clarify, we're doing away with number four, number five, stating that number six will be all repair activities, shall occur inside, along with storage?
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to get my mind right around it.
Okay. Is everybody clear? All righty, this is Back Creek.
Madam Chair, nobody has a problem. I'd like to recommend an approval of conditional use, conditional use permit 0114, and delete four and five for its requirements.
And any change to number six, did I hear?
Yeah.
The storage and repair inside.
Yeah, and number six, that'd be good, yes.
Mr. Rudolph, is that, is that, do you understand what we've just done? In other words, we've changed those. Are you in agreement with the changes that we've made?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion, how about we vote?
Second.
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 Sorry. I got all the time.
That's all right.
Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Tunnel Lap, yes.
Tripple, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on February 26. Okay, our next item is an action item for us, and it is a waiver request of the reduction in the setback for telecommunications tower Verizon Wireless, the Bertha McElwee Trust submitted by Donahue &amp; Sterns PLC requesting a setback reduction for an approved telecommunications tower. The property is located at 2250 Back Mountain Road, Route 600, and is identified with property identification number 49A28 in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Again, Mr. Sharon?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. This action item before use for a waiver for 195-foot-tall telecommunications tower that was approved through conditional use permit 0313. The tower currently, without the waiver, the tower would need a setback of 210 feet from the nearest property line. If I could show you the, if you turn your attention to the map on your left, I think you're pretty familiar with this site. It was a conditional use permit that did come through. The applicant has submitted a site plan, as was pointed out in the staff report, that the setback waiver would be needed. The applicant had applied in his packet a setback waiver, there's also a, in the packet there's also, the CUP, excuse me, from a certified engineer. It did not get into the minutes, and that's why we're back in front of you tonight at the time, at the Board of Supervisors for this waiver. As you can, if you can make out the, where the tower's going to be located, it actually affects four properties. We did send a joining letters out to those property owners, and unless they're here tonight, we didn't get any positive or any comments or negative comments about this proposed waiver of the setback requirements. Should this waiver be given, it will result in a 111.4-foot setback reduction from the RA setbacks that are currently out there, as pointed out in your, in the staff report. I can answer any questions that you have. The applicant is here to also answer any questions you may have on this waiver for a setback reduction for a telecommunications tower. Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Sharon?
If we approve this conditional use permit and the tower manufact, can the tower manufacturer sell their rights to another tower manufacturer to install the tower?
They would still have to abide by the conditional use permit with this waiver that was already approved out there. The conditional use permit and the waiver will stay with the land.
And they would have to comply with the engineer's certification also?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I do have a question.
Yes.
Mark, I don't understand, I guess, why we're doing this. It was approved the first time. Was the site not suitable, we changed the location?
No, the location stated stay, Mr. Unger.
What had happened was that, at the time when it was presented to the Board of Supervisors, the waiver request was there. If you recall, it went through this body, it was delayed, or it was actually tabled at the Board of Supervisor, when it came back through, it was not added to the minutes as part of the conditional use permit, and that's why we're doing the waiver tonight.
So, we did not see the waiver request?
That's correct.
It's more of a cleanup exercise, I guess. That's what it sounds like.
You okay, Mr. Unger?
Yeah, I think so.
Does the applicant wish to address us for any reason?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Patway. I represent Verizon Wireless. I really don't have any comments. I mean, I'm here to answer any questions. Essentially, as Mr. Sharon stated, the location will remain the same, it's the exact location where we got the conditional use approved in September. The difference is more of an administrative issue, that it wasn't part of the conditions of approval. We had requested the waiver, the waiver request had been in the application, and I believe we discussed it with the planning commission, at the planning commission meeting, went to the Board of Supervisors. We had another issue that came up that we had to take care of with the Shawnee Sanitation District, and I think with all of that, that's where we kind of got lost with that information not getting into the minutes for approval.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant?
I have one question. I'm looking in the staff report at the letter, I assume this is from a structural engineer describing on how the pole might possibly break under a load, and it was signed by Mr. Habib Vazuri, I believe. This letter is three years old.
Well, where we started this is actually a couple years ago, and it's the same manufacturer that we would use. I mean, we can get a current letter, it's the same information. When we actually started this process, it was actually three years ago when we started this, went down this road as far as looking at the site, designing the pole so that it would meet the requirements to collapse, so it wouldn't collapse completely down, it would collapse within the setback, based upon the location where the property owner has asked us to place the pole. So, yes, I realize it is, at this point, three years old, but that's how long this process has been when we first went, started down this road to get this application approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for being here. Yes. For the audience, this item did go through its, if you will, its initial application process. However, there's a piece of it that was left out, and technically speaking, we are not having a public hearing, but if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to this, you're certainly welcome to do that. Well, let's see. Any other comments? Any other thoughts?
I can pay the fee.
Shall we clean it up? Would someone like to make a motion?
Are we going to invite the public, or?
No. We did that.
Just to clean up, I'd like to recommend approval of, I guess, approval of waiver of the setback for the telecommunications tower at Verizon Wireless at McKee Trust.
McElwee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval for the waiver request of the Bertha McElwee Trust and Verizon Wireless. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Oats, yes.
Snow.
Kenny, yes.
Tripple, yes. Tunnel Lap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on February 12. Thank you. All righty, our next item is an information discussion item for the planning commission, and it deals with revised master development plan 0214 Dune Bag submitted by Greenway Engineering to develop 4.78 acres into 25 single-family small lots. The subject property is located north of Apple Valley Road, Route 652, approximately one-quarter mile west of Valley Pike, Route 11 South, intersection, intersection, in other words, where those two roads intersect. It is identified with property identification number 63A52A in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a proposal for a 25-single-family small lot development located off Apple Valley Road. This is a revised master plan. The original master plan was approved back in 2012. If you look to the screen to your left, this is an outline of the property. At the bottom portion of the map, you can see where Apple Valley Road is located. And again, this is the sheet from the master development plan. It shows the Apple Valley Road, the road that goes into the property, the cul-de-sac, which is all in the same location that was originally approved. Now, the primary changes to the master plan, it was approved back in 2012, is first, the addition of one new lot, which is the result of some additional acres that the property owner acquired, and second is the elimination of a residential separation buffer that was originally shown along the back property line. However, with the RP standards that were modified back January of last year, the residential separation buffers between those housing types was removed. Now, I would note that while the master plan does show the removal of the buffer, the applicant will be retaining the existing fence along the northern property line, which is labeled on the master plan. Also, the original master plan contained a number of waivers which still run with the property, so all those waivers are still in place. So, as I stated, this is a revised master plan. It's an informational item only. It will be presented to the board. I'd be glad to ask any questions that you may have, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Okey-dokey. Questions regarding this, this change? Any? Don't see any. Does the applicant have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. This is fairly straightforward, but if there's questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okey-dokey. This is Back Creek. Busy night.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend approval of revisions to the master development plan 02-14.
No vote? Okay.
Information.
We're getting so expert at it. Sorry, Mr. Unger.
That's okay.
Okay. Do we have anything that we would like to tell Candace to take to the Board of Supervisors? Other than this is fairly straightforward.
Straightforward.
Thank you. Sorry, Candace. The next item is revised master development plan 01-14 Snowden Bridge submitted by Greenway Engineering to develop 1,234 units of single-family townhouse and multifamily houses. The subject properties are located on the south side of Old Charlestown Road, Route 761, and Jordan Springs Road, Route 664, and east of Milburn Road, Route 662, and are identified with property identification numbers 44-A-31B, 44-A-292A, and 44-A293 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. And Mrs. Perkins reminds us that this is for informational purposes only, but I have a question after you're done.
Yes, ma'am. As you stated, this is another revised master plan. This is a proposal for 364 acres of land that is zoned RA. The proposal, the actual change only applies to about 158 acres of the development. There's a total of 1,234 residential units within the entire development. It will consist of a mix of single-family townhouse and multifamily units. Now, the master plan contains revisions to what was formerly called revised master plan revision number two. This is number three. It was reviewed by the planning commission back in December of 2012, and the board in January of 2013. Now, the primary revisions to this plan are some modifications to the road network, the housing, and the housing types within the undeveloped portion of the development. This is a location map for the property. It just shows the overall boundaries of the Brookfield Holdings. And then the master plan, which was included in your agenda, that shows all the road networks and the environmental features. Now, one kind of change with this that we do need planning commission recommendation on is the waiver that the applicant is requesting. They are requesting a waiver of 165, 203.02C. Now, back... Now, back when the board approved the RP district changes, there's a new buffer that is required between multiplex units and single-family units. Previously, only buffers were required between RP-zoned properties. However, the change introduced the buffer requirement based on the housing types. See, this is a blow-up of the buffer area. If I can go back to the, the main map, it's this, it's this area right here. Now, the zoning ordinance requires a category B buffer as a residential screening element required between the proposed multiplex units and the existing residential units on Jordan Springs Road. The ordinance does allow for the Board of Supervisors to waive the buffer if the topography of the lot providing the buffer yard and the lot being protected is such that the required buffer yard would not be effective. Now, the applicant provided a detail that showed the, the topography difference between the existing residential units on Jordan Springs and the proposed multiplex units, and there's about a 20-foot grade differential between the two units. So they are requesting a waiver. So while the master plan is presented as an informational item only, we do need a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the board on the requested waiver. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Evan Wyatt, again, is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you. Any questions? Any? Not a one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to address us?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Once again, Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. The waiver, the one, the one piece I would like to add to this, you can see from the sections that we've done, there's two, there's two things that you can see. There's a fairly lengthy distance between where existing residences are. This one represents this cross-section. This one is representative of this cross-section, and this one down here. The closest one from the house to the, to the unit is over 200 feet. This one is over 300. This one's over 400 feet. But because of the topography, there's also an issue, you saw on the larger map where the ravine channel runs through, and this is the location of that. The grading through here is such, of course, it's, it starts and it drops down. So the topography is, is against us on the one side, and it also is such that if we were to end up putting a six-foot-high board-on-board fence in conjunction with the road here, you can see visually, it's really not going to do anything at all. The existing residential units will, will either look over the rooftops or see the rooftops. One thing we did do, though, we did send a letter to the residents that own properties in that area, and we advised them that if they were interested, that we would be happy to meet with them, and if they would be willing to give us an easement somewhere on their property, that we would put the landscaping up there that would have otherwise been required. So we've, we've reached out to them in that regard, so if, if we are contacted, we'll be happy to do that piece. So, so the waiver, I think, is, is, the request is, is valid. Hopefully, the cross-sections kind of tell the story, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Wyatt? Don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I knew there was a vote around here somewhere that we had to take, and this is it. So any comments on, on the revised master development plan? Okay, well, let's consider and, and make a recommendation on the waiver. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, you know, when you look at these, the diagram that Mr. Wyatt and Greenway has presented, you know, when you look at that distance, I'm looking at the topography drop-off, you know, 300 and some feet, 400 feet. I know it's a great distance, but this makes it look like it's, it's like the houses are right on top of one another, and it's more of a plane that you're looking at. I, I do have some concerns that, just concerns that this is not a true depiction of, you know, the, I don't think a house 300 feet away is going to be looking down on rooftops. I think you're going to be looking more into the back of it. So I guess if I, you know, look at this, I notice it's a, they went to a lot of work, and I understand where they're coming from on it, but it's, you know, it kind of makes it look like it's a slam dunk, but I don't know if it really is, and I don't know, I'd like to see a little more information on, on a more truer depiction of what this would actually look like if coming from me to satisfy, I guess, my, if that's valid, which is what I'm saying there. I mean, it looks like there's 131 feet of drop-off, you know, I don't know. It just seems to me that it's kind of skewed in some of this I've got here, to get it in my mind, to wrap around it right now. It's an exaggerated scale, but it's not one for one on the vertical and horizontal.
Yeah. I think, though, the, the key is if we build a six-foot fence 50 feet behind the townhouses.
What does it really?
It doesn't do anything because your viewscape's going to be across the top of the fence. You're still going to see the side of the building or the side of the townhouse. We'd have to put the fence up in the single-family lot, or they'd have to put the fence up in a single-family lot to, to prevent it from seeing the townhouse.
Like I said, I'm not, I don't, I'm not opposed, it's just it seems like it's a little...
I think this skews how you look at it, but I don't think the fence is practical.
I'm not disagreeing with you that, at all.
If we had a line of oak trees that were 75-foot tall, that'd be great.
That would be, that'd be super.
Is there anything that you'd like to see further?
Not, no, 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 ma'am, no problem. Just a comment.
All right. Well, we do need to make a recommendation on the waiver itself.
Madam Chairman, I recommend that we approve the waiver.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any, any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Tunnel lap, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manual, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on February the 12th. Thank you. It looks like we are at the end of our agenda, and we have, we're going to see each other soon, because on February the 8th, this Saturday, we will be at our retreat. And I, I asked Eric if he would be kind enough to put this list up there, because in some sense, these are the items that we'll be talking about, whether we can amend them, whether we can make them better, or we do just fine at it. And when I communicated to you earlier, I asked that you make notes for anything that you would like to discuss with the way that we operate. It's how we do it, not what we do. And I think we've been doing lots of whats, and perhaps can take some time to see how we can sharpen up our, if you will, how we do it, rather than what. So your homework is to come to the meeting with anything that might fit in those categories that you would like to discuss, because we are going to create what is discussed. Is that clear? Is Mudd? Okay? All righty. Well, we'll see you on Saturday. We have one other thing to do, and that is our meeting for the 19th has no agenda, so we need to cancel it.
Move that we cancel our 19th of February meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okey-dokey.
Mr. Grill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. See you Saturday.